Todd, I don't know if you can hear me, but you just lost your video connection.
Nice choice of purple tonight, Commissioner Halt.
Appreciate that. Trying to get my tan to pop a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Probably should have gone with white, really, but I like the diversity of the purple.
I like the coat today. Coat anti. That's a change.
Greg, if you would like to begin our little Zoom speech. You want to start a little ahead, or do you want to wait till 5:30?
I can start with our little speech. Evening, everyone. I'm interim city administrator Greg Elliott, and I'd like to address a few things before the mayor requests the roll call. This is a pre-meeting, which is formed for the city commission to discuss various issues and topics. Much of the meeting, we asked the participants mute themselves to allow the commissioners to have their discussions and to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. Opportunity for public comment will be provided at the end of the meeting. Participants will be invited at the time to unmute and address the commission if they wish. We've talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of meeting to law enforcement for investigation. We hope to conduct the meeting free of this sort of interruption, but will temporarily shut down the meeting if this happens. Thank you all for participating. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you for the roll call.
You're on mute, Angie. You're on mute. Usually it's me.
We will start the pre-meeting for the September 8, 2020 meeting, pre-meeting, sorry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Halt. Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
I will now hand it over to you, Greg, to begin the discussions.
Okay, so our first topic tonight is on wild animal feeding, and we have a presentation from Mark Murray, who I see is with us. I'll turn the meeting and turn it over to him.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to have just a couple of minutes of your time. Goodness knows you guys are real busy and don't have a lot of time for this, but we would like to just be able to give you some background. We have a couple of additional resources. Webster from the DNR is on, and he can comment. So I'm going to say a few things and then leave it up to Shane and anyone else, and of course Greg or whoever wants to take over. We'll keep it as short as we can. So basically, we're asking the city to investigate options to limit humans from indiscriminate feeding of wild animals, which creates a human and an animal health issue and a blight problem for the city. We'd like to thank you for your time and your understanding. For those of you who don't have wild animal feeding in a significant problem in your area, you're lucky. For those of us that do have the problem, it's a significant and ongoing problem. People feeding various animals within the city limits. We wish to address the problem basically of that and not of the problem with animals that are naturally in the community. We're only going after the issue of human beings feeding animals repeatedly in the same area, drawing animals into the location. We would expect that enforcement is going to be a difficult issue. We spoke with Glenn Preston and others. But at this point, if we don't have any kind of ordinance or penalty, then this indiscriminate feeding will just continue to go on and on, and it really is a case of anarchy at this point. We believe that the city needs to have an ordinance with some kind of an enforcement tool so that we can work to reduce the problem. We don't object to, obviously, residents feeding their pets, their birds, the animals, anything basically on their own property. The specific issue we're dealing with is when human beings bring food to places where they do not reside within the city limits and dump food, either waste food that they have for deer. Or in the case of one of our neighbors, we have a basically what we call an industrial goose and cat feeding operation where they're the individual stores, large quantities of food on the property and comes by daily and feeds the animals. And we get up to, we recently counted almost 200 geese in the immediate area of the Charlotte Stevenson Manor. And adjacent to that is a cat house, a shed that is designed to house feral cats. And those cats are fed on a regular basis. It's unfortunate, but we see dead cats around, and there are just lots of youngsters. And the problem with waste from the animals pooping all over the place. And of course, we're on Lake Adrian, and so every time we have a rain, all of that effluent ends up in the city water supply that has to be treated and taken care of. Again, so just in summary, we're talking about deer in the back of Sawmill Court subdivision. There's an area that's repeatedly used by a few people to bring food waste, and they feed it there. We have three or four clusters of deer that are here on our property now in Sawmill. The deer don't leave. They stay. They'll stand in our front yard now. They're almost personal pets, although we don't think of them as pets. The geese are all over the place every day. The feral cats are all over. We really would like to see some way that we could address this. Again, if you don't have this kind of problem in your area, commissioners, it's easy to not be too interested in it. But for those of us who struggle with it, it is a big issue. So we just would hope that we could get something started to take a look at some kind of ordinances that would address these issues. And I'd like to have Shane Webster from the DNR, who's taken time to be here with us. Go ahead, Shane, if you will, unmute, and if you're willing to offer some information about this very briefly, because we have to get off here in a couple of minutes.
Absolutely. I'll try to be brief. I am Sergeant Shane Webster. I work out of District 9, the Detroit District here in in the IBS, cover Lenawee County as a supervisor for conservation officers. We have been supportive of other areas that have done ordinances in the past to come, see comes to mind in the local area. As far as prohibiting the feeding and baiting, especially deer. Department of Natural Resources is obviously very concerned about the spread of wildlife disease. That is the main focus for the current statewide ban for those issues. What that does cover is any natural or artificial substance that is placed that would attract deer. So it needs to be inaccessible to deer if we're going to feed other wildlife. We do find that that does help with other things. Mr. Murray expressed problems with geese and things like that. And we keep it up off the ground where deer can't access it. That is extremely helpful. And as expressed, there is a current statewide, at least lower peninsula order prohibiting the baiting and feeding of deer. But we do find it beneficial when there are local ordinances. Essentially, any state violation is a misdemeanor, and it's often nice to have a civil infraction option with an ordinance. The state agency, we could not enforce that, but the locals obviously can come out and enforce that. And that is beneficial in circumstances where we, you know, people are just putting out a little bit of feed because they think they just want to watch the wildlife. We don't necessarily want to come in there with a misdemeanor charge. It is another option for enforcement that can curb that activity.
Thanks, Shane. Back to the commission. Do you have any questions that we could answer regarding the problem that we're bringing forth?
Mark, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to make a comment. I would like to say to the other commissioners that I have seen the issue that Mr. Murray is talking about with both the deer, the cats, and the geese. And one of my big concerns is that, you know, this time next year, Bixby Hospital, a big part of Bixby Hospital will have moved out north of town. There's going to be a lot less activity over at Bixby Hospital, and it's really going to invite the deer and the cats and things to spread out more than they already are. Also, if you drive down Springbrook Avenue, 5, 6 o'clock in the evening, sometimes you'll see five or six deer along Springbrook Avenue. So this side of this corner of the western part of the city is becoming more and more inhabited with wild animals. And but one of my big concerns is when Bixby leaves, and it's just going to open up their territory. And even though they're nice to look at from afar, I agree with Mr. Murray that I don't think you want deer in your backyard.
I will say that I, on a lot of occasions, have seen five or six deer in my backyard, you know, from time to time. And I'm kind of shocked because my old neighborhood is kind of in a gully. That's where I am. There's a lot more wooded area. But even living here where it's more condensed, I do see it, and it's, you know, it's more so later, you know, later in the evening, you know, it's dark. But they usually scatter when I come home and I see them back there, but they always stand back on our big tree. And I remember Mr. Murray was on here a while ago talking about the cat issue we had over by his house and wanting us to take a look at something like that so we can help combat that, too. So I think it's definitely something we can look at for sure. Mr. Murray, do we have a thing?
I have some other questions. So, Mr. Webster from DNR. So are there any other animal feeding bans in lower peninsula?
Not expressly for other species. We discourage, obviously, the feeding of other wildlife, especially waterfall and those things, simply because they can become, I guess, stuck in that area. And we also are concerned, obviously, about the incidents with vehicular traffic in those areas as well, especially areas with more traffic and those things. But specifically, no, there's no ban on any other species other than for hunting purposes.
Sure. Okay, so Mark Murray, so where they're dumping the food, who owns that land?
Al Ballenberger.
So it's owned by, and he is the one dumping?
Yes, he lives across town. He
So the residents are dumping on their own property or feeding on their own property. It's not known by the
Not a resident. Yeah, it's not a resident, and I think if anything, we'd like to have that be in there, that residents can get away with whatever they want. It's when a resident leaves their property with food to go to another location in the city. And because neighbors will help control whatever goes on, except if they can drive across town and dump it, then they're out of their neighborhood, and we don't have any recourse in terms of putting pressure on Mr. Ballenberger about doing this stuff.
Okay, all right. So it's his land, and this is what he's doing on his land.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Next question, if that's okay, if I can take up a little bit more time. So I have lots of neighbors who feed squirrels. If we did something like this, would we have to do it for all wildlife? Or would it be specific where it's deer, cats, geese? Or, you know, I don't know, there might be some people who feed raccoons that I don't know about. But I do know some of my neighbors do feed the squirrels. They put the little cornstalk on there. Is that also going to be banned?
We wouldn't encourage, Commissioner, that the ban only extend to off the place where you reside. So if you want to feed anything on your property, I'm not sure that that's the kind of problem that we're experiencing. And so I would have nothing in there about squirrels or any other animals off your property. I do think it is geese, cats, and deer that we're specifically asking the commission to deal with.
Okay, thank you. I do know that, oh, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
I do know that Steve Benz was also in on this, too, Mark, in the letter that was addressed to us. And I know he's, are we okay, commissioners, with him speaking as well? Because he was involved with this, with Mark presenting it to us, because I know he wanted to say something. You can go ahead. Steve, you can go ahead.
All set? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good. Okay, no, I reinforce completely what Matt, what Mark has talked about. Basically, I've lived here for 21 years on Ballenberger Road. My original neighbor, Mrs. Ballenberger, had a cat that she had. Once she passed away, her son continued to feed feral cats, squirrels, now geese, and no longer reside on the property. This has led to dead cats in my yard. I've taken kittens to be put down. I've talked to them multiple times. I've had to fence off my deck to keep cats from licking my grill and all over my house. I've had to fence off my deck to keep cats from licking my grill and all over my house. They've marked the front of my house. I can't walk down Ballenberger Road without watching very carefully where I step because of goose droppings. He feeds squirrels, but the millet's all over the ground, so it feeds geese. I also own the property where the Sawmill Court is. And last year, at this fall, I found a deer and two fawns of them had been dumped there by somebody who had killed them. They're also feeding the deer down there at various times, various people, I don't know who. Despite at times being posted, signs get torn down. I've had multiple conversations with Mr. Ballenberger, but nothing seems to happen. So I just, I, you know, I'm pretty frustrated by it, but I've learned to live with it, but I don't like it particularly. And I think I would agree with Mark that a solution of some kind might be helpful to slow these things down. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Dr. Benz and Mr. Murray, I don't think this is something that you should have to live with. This this seems like totally out of line. Do we have any any feeling for why Mr. Ballenberger is doing this? And and is this like, is this waste food? Or is this just truly like field corn and and good wildlife food that is literally for that? I mean, this couldn't be misconstrued as, say, a compost pile or something like that, that that the animals have taken a liking to, is it?
No, Commissioner, if you can, please swing by Charlotte Stevenson and look across the street. You will find these these tubs, the sixty-five gallon tubs that are on the the property. And Ballenberger brings twenty-five pound bags of grain and fills the tubs and then comes by and you and dispenses from the tubs on a regular basis. So it's an industrial feeding operation that he has set up for both the cats and the geese.
And 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 nobody benefits from this. I mean, this is not like anything. It's not like a hunting lodge where you're baiting them to to slaughter them for food. I mean, this is, this is literally just to create a nuisance, it sounds like.
Correct.
By me, it is, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, commissioners, from from this discussion, as well as from the the proposed ordinance or the draft ordinance that or whatever the additional document was. I I feel like this is something that's totally in line, and it's not benefiting anybody. This is not good for the animals. It's not good for the residents. It doesn't seem like there's any benefit to this. And we need to change somebody's habits because this isn't a good hobby either.
Since this has appeared on the agenda, I've actually had a couple of people reach out to me, either people that run in that area or people that deliver things to the dialysis center or Charlotte Stevenson. And there's actually been people that have been hurt from wiping out, trying to run on because the the goose droppings are so bad in that area. Or like deer that have almost run into cars. I've seen it firsthand. I was actually telling Mr. Murray myself that I, you know, like to drive down there. We were looking at property down there at one point, and we saw like, it almost like dog bowls that were out, like filled with like, you know, different like scraps from maybe, you know, like vegetable scraps and things like that. So I've seen it firsthand myself and was very concerned. And this was quite a while ago. And I actually assumed it was the residents in the area. And now that Dr. Benz and Mr. Murray have brought that to our attention, we're finding out it's it's not. And it's very concerning. I I know that a lot of people have already expressed their concern as well. Not just a few on here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners, for your time on this. We'll we'll get out of your hair. You've got a lot of work to do, but we really appreciate you being willing to hear us out and and off and be a part of a solution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, on the pre-meeting agenda, we have an item for discussion of the sale of property out at the Marvin Farm. Michelle, if you can share the the map of that.
Okay. I think we made our point.
So you're all aware on the on the north side of Beecher, west of town, this is basically across the street from Flourish. We own this parcel, which is a hundred and two acres, and then an adjacent parcel, which is roughly fifty acres. There's very limited ways into that property. One of, there's essentially two way, two narrow strips in on Beecher and one on Sand Creek to get there. And this would be the off the easterly most entry to the property. Immediately, that entry that you see, that drive in the middle is is just east of where Consumers is building their electrical substation out there right now. So Tamara and I were approached by a company called Objective Growth. They are they've been in the in the beverage industry historically, but are venturing out into into the marijuana industry. And and they have an interest in acquiring a piece of that property that's depicted by the hatching on this drawing. And so we've been in discussions with them, and we've received an offer from them for this property. And I I will tell you that the the offer is six hundred thousand dollars for twenty acres of land, which is pretty good price, thirty thousand dollars an acre for that land out there, which is essentially farmland right right now. I I think we, you know, unfortunately, we're not, we were not in a position to actually put the purchase agreement on the agenda before you, because it hadn't been fully negotiated. I think it may be now. I I received back another revision of that late this afternoon. And I think we're probably there in terms of agreement between Tamara and I and and the prospective purchasers on the terms of that. But to that end, we have an item on your regular meeting agenda tonight to begin the process of looking at rezoning this property. On the one hand, to, as well as our other property out there, to I-1 district. This particular parcel is zoned B-2, which is our general commercial district right now. And then property to the to the west, oddly enough, is zoned, I believe, two family or townhouse district, one of those two currently. And so our proposal, the proposal would be to initiate rezoning of it all to I-1, which is the underlying zone for marijuana overlays, and then to include it in the west overlay to facilitate this sort of use out there if that's something that you would be interested in. But I wanted to put it on the pre-meeting agenda tonight to give the commission a chance to to talk about it. We don't think we've had a chance to talk about it in public forum yet. And since we're asking you to take some action later on at the regular meeting, I want to give you that opportunity right now and ask any questions of Tamara and I, if you have any. I'll just give this direction on on moving forward with this prospective transaction. It seems like it could be quite beneficial for us. Could in fact kind of set the tone for other things on that property, which has sat there undeveloped for a for a long period of time.
Mr. Elliott, I have a question. By adding this to the overlay, do we anticipate that there might be any other businesses that had the property been in the overlay to begin with, they would have had an interest in obtaining part of that land?
Well, I'm not aware of any who have been interested in this land. Obviously, it's for sale, and it's been for sale for a long time. But what I would also say about that is if if they have such an interest, there's plenty of land left. And so, you know, there's going to be about another hundred and thirty acres still available if other other parties have an interest in either this use or, you know, any kind of light industrial use out there. We kind of eliminated our, you know, the the this is opportunated in another way because we kind of eliminated our industrial park that we had, selling that land mostly for other purposes. And so this is a nice substitute for that in the same general area. Could serve the same function.
Thank you. I've got a couple of other questions, but I'll save those for the planning commission meeting.
Okay.
I did take a little field trip today after work and and went to look at this. You know, there's some of those basic points or the basic questions that always get asked of us as we've sold other property. And and I went out there. One was to look for the sign in the yard, and there's a very prominent sign, and it's got some taller than low cut grass around it. So to me, that says that's been there long enough that this property has been advertised for sale. And then the second piece was, you know, just does it, does it make sense? And in overall, to me, it does make sense, considering what's across the street, considering the area that it's in. There there's, it just, it, I don't know, you know, again, I'll go back a couple of years. I was not a fan of the marijuana industry coming to Adrian. I will say that a number of the businesses, and I'll pick them out. Flourish has shown me what a marijuana business can be run like. I drive by there when I when I just went out to look at this property. Tons of cars in that parking lot for people working. Not a lick of odor coming out of it and a very attractive property. I would have the exact same expectations from what I know of this organization to do on the other side of the street. Seems like a good idea to me, unless there's some skeleton that I don't know about yet.
I'm going to chime in if I could. Again, I I think this is the result of opting in early. And I remember Commissioner Jeff Rising and myself, we were the proponents of the, you know, legalization is coming, so let's get out in front of it. Let's be quicker than some of the bigger cities, but also let's do our homework also. So I think us being aggressive in the beginning of this whole process, because I was there when that when that decision was made, I think allows us to have these kind of projects come to us because we're so far ahead in our ordinances. And just that corridor alone, Flourish is just, it looks like a big greenhouse, well, actually a red house because they're all red. But again, just state of the art companies. I think from that to our dispensaries we have here in town are all well-run, maintained. I have no concern. I think we're getting a really good price for selling the twenty acres. And I'm just excited about this because I consider this just as much economic development as any of the outs. We're we're selling a a large piece of property and we're getting, and we're throwing it back in the tax rolls. And who knows what this company's plan is? They could develop twenty acres and then say, you know what, we need ten more or fifteen more or twenty more. And that could be just such beneficial for the city because, again, we're getting, I'm not going to say peanuts for the for the lease of the farm property. But this could be a potential investment that goes right back in the tax roll and 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 that we can provide our services for our citizens. So again, I think that it makes me happy when things like this come about because it shows that being aggressive sometimes, a lot of doing your homework matters. So.
I'd like to chime in on this and say that this all came about because our staff at City Hall, excuse me, did a very, very good job with our marijuana ordinances. And these companies are looking at us now and realize that this is a good place to start a business or expand on their business. But as I hear all of this, I, the only thing that goes through my mind is jobs, jobs, jobs. We've seen it happen at Flourish. We've seen it happen with the the provisioning centers, and we're seeing it happen at the testing center out in front of Flourish. And this just creates more jobs. And everybody knows how many jobs that we have lost over the last ten or fifteen years to other industry. And so this is our way of bringing those jobs back. And I couldn't be happier about it.
Please don't mistake my comments as being against this because I agree with everybody else. This is great business. It does bring jobs to the city. I see your face there, Commissioner Watson, laughing again. But yeah, so I I think it's important to attract these kinds of businesses. I did have one more question that I won't save until the planning commission. Looking at the scheme that you've got here on on the screen, is that an entryway that goes between the two parcels of, I'm guessing, about ten acres apiece? And is that access to the rest of the property?
Sorry, that's the way it's meant to be represented, that there would be a roadway there between parcels on either side. They have an interest in doing four different sorts of facilities, a grow facility, a testing facility, a secure transport facility, and a dispensary on the site. And so they would portion those amongst those two sides of the road. This was very particularly attractive to them because it's very close to the power. And it's very expensive to to bring that power a long distance. And so as close as I could possibly be to it in this location. But I I would envision that that road would continue up through the property as all their sites are developed. And that would be the way it would go, become like a business park of of uses in there in the future.
I also want to thank, you know, thank Greg and Attorney Henigan for for being decisive in this process too. Because again, it's a, this kind of industry is very competitive. I think it takes, you know, all hands on deck and 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 so something like this could easily slip away. So I want to thank them too for working hard on this and and even getting us to this stage right now. I mean, it's not signed and delivered yet, but I think a lot of momentum is going downhill now instead of the upward climb that you guys tackled. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hell. Commissioner Goss, if I could come back around to your first question about other people who or other companies who may have wanted property out there. I would concur with Greg that there's not any that I'm aware of that look for property, additional property in the west overlay. But I did want to just point out that in looking at where this new company could come in, we first considered possibilities in the east overlay, knowing that there were still some opportunity there. There were not any possible locations that could fit the scheme of their project. But we first looked to fill those spaces up and see if we could encourage some economic development on the east side first and foremost. When we realized that that would not work for this particular company, we then considered whether to discuss the the land at Marvin Farms. And we also looked at the fact that the west overlay is completely occupied at this time. And so through that consideration, we felt it was appropriate to recommend to the commission to expand the west overlay, knowing that even though there have been some requests in the past to expand the east overlay, there are many available properties there. And so that expansion, we don't see as being necessary yet. But with the west overlay, all of the land that was initially designated for the overlay has been used. And we also felt that with the city property being across the street from current cannabis industry, that it would probably be the best use and and the best way to get the property value for the land so that the city would also be able to make good fiscal decisions on the sale. But we did consider all those different types of scenarios before coming to any of you with this recommendation.
Appreciate that explanation, Ms. Henigan. I would just ask that you all go out now and find about five more companies that want to pay thirty thousand. Bring bring those to us to approve.
I I will say that I'm really glad to see that we do also tonight on the discussion have the air pollution ordinance draft in discussion because I do see that becoming a becoming a bigger issue now that, you know, we are looking at this. I I was very excited when I found out about this. And that property has sat there for a long time. My parents live right by there. I drive by it daily. And I'm just really glad that, you know, that that we can get it on the tax roll, that we can, you know, get jobs in our community and, you know, see progress. But I do really feel that it's even more pertinent that we do get this air pollution ordinance draft and and get this going and get it into play. and get this going and get it into play.
Okay. There's nothing else on that. As I say, you do have a resolution on your regular meeting agenda tonight that would initiate a resounding of those, and that would result down on a public hearing before the planning commission. The planning commission scheduled a special meeting for the 24th of this month to accommodate the schedule for these users. And so that'll keep that on track. The next item we have for the pre-meeting discussion is our proposed engineering services contract. Now, this is not on for action tonight, only for discussion. But we did bid out engineering services on an as-needed basis to a number of firms. We got a number of responses. And I see Matt is here, and I think he's prepared to describe that process for you and what the recommendation coming out of it is. And I think we also have a representative of a little bidder, which was Manik and Smith, or several of them from the looks of that, here to speak to you as well. I'll turn it over to Matt right now to start that off.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. So we went through the process. We put out an RFQP. We wanted to base this off of qualifications first, over price. We ended up getting seven bids back. There was a group of four of us on the reviewing team, myself, Will Sather, Greg, and then the project manager Brett Armstrong. We all had two of the same firms in the top three, one being Manik and Smith, and the other one being Tetra Tech. With those two, we ended up looking at the cost proposal. And it did, in fact, prove that Manik and Smith was the lesser of the two options. And they're also a local business as well. They are right down the block from City of Adrian, from City Hall. So that was the process that we went through. And again, I think on the, in your packets was the comparison between Tetra Tech and Manik and Smith. But if you guys have any other questions, feel free to ask me, or we do have a couple of representatives from Manik as well.
Yeah, Matt, I'll go first. I had been reaching out to Greg, and I've CC you in the email just to kind of get the scope on Manik and Smith, or, because I do, I do read the vouchers, and I wanted to make sure that we're getting the best price. So I appreciate you biding that out for our contract services so I can have some clarity on that. So.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
I think if we could have the folks from Manik and Smith address the commission as well, kind of talk about their history. As most of you probably know, but as they can explain, Manik and Smith recently acquired a local firm here, associated, has a long history in this area. I'll turn it over to them for a minute to talk about all that.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. Can you hear me all right? Good. This is, I appreciate everybody's time this evening, commissioners, as well as Mrs. Mayor. We, my name's Eric Bennett. I'm the one in the back in the blue. So, and then I've got Aaron Hacker here in the front with me, one of our senior project design engineers, does a lot of our municipal engineering. Kevin Pickford, who's also one of our principals, vice president, former owner at Associate Engineers Surveyors, as you said. And then Todd Brown in the orange, who Todd's one of our, director of our municipal services here for what we look at as kind of our central Michigan region. So a- as you said, Greg, we did, Manik and Smith's been working in Adrian on and off for quite a few years. We've had a handful of contracts as you guys needed help, and actually teamed quite a bit with AES. And then we made the decision about three years ago that we, we wanted to come to Adrian. We felt it was an area where we could hopefully bring engineering, few technical, civil, environmental engineering services to this part of the state. We have quite a few offices surrounding Adrian. We just didn't have one here. And in talking with Kevin and Steve Young and Jeremy with where AES was at in their transition and the comfort level we had working together with their presence here, we, we felt it made sense. We did the merger. It was effective. As anybody that's gone through mergers knows, it's kind of a long process. Kevin can vouch for that. It was a little longer than maybe we thought it would take. But as of January 1st, AES is now fully owned by the Manik and Smith Group. And we're two blocks away here. We have done, like I said, a few projects prior to as Manik and Smith, and now with Manik and Smith being together with AES, we've got a lot more depth, understanding, obviously, the local feel for the community. Then doing a lot of community outreach, both through AES and Manik and Smith. So just to give you a little feel for Manik and Smith, we've been around, we actually just celebrated our 65th year, which is very similar to what AES had through, through their history as well. So deep, deep history as to the engineering surveying side of things. We started out as a road and bridge company with Manic, Mr. Manic and Mr. Smith, and have grown from, from that into now into a full service engineering firm, doing everything from upfront concepts, grant writing, funding assistance, through planning, concept, road, bridge, underground utilities, the environmental component for a lot of these projects. If we're impacting lake streams or other environmentally impacted areas, a lot of wetland mitigation, construction support, and really everything in between. So we pride ourselves in really being that one-stop shop for a lot of municipalities. We, we started in Michigan in 1989, and since then have grown, grown from three people over in Monroe Township to now we've got 14 offices throughout Michigan and Ohio, one office in West Virginia, really focused on, over half of our business being focused on the, the public sector side of things. So we, we understand it pretty well. Excited to keep helping, you know, helping the city and trying to find, you know, funding alternatives and options for you as well, as we get to better understand your program. And I know working with Matt and some of the things that him and Greg are going to be working on as far as the, you know, the asset management side of your program, and, you know, where's, where's the money really coming from? So with that, unless anybody else here with me wanted to say anything, I, we're excited to be here. We're spread out as much as we can be spread out in our conference room over here. And we look forward to any questions you may have, and leave it at that.
If there are any other questions from the commission, what we would envision is that we have the actual contract on your next agenda for action. To say it's as-needed contracts, so only in effect when we, when we need services, there's no, our block in other ones.
If I could, Greg, just add, add one more thought. Understanding it is as-needed services, and it is just that. So we're here to help when you need help, and if you don't need help, we understand that as well. So we definitely understand that. Appreciate the process you guys went through. Anytime you go from a qualifications-based selection to the, the low-bid selection, it's timely, but it's a good process to go through to make sure you're, you're getting good value for, for your professional engineering services.
Thank you. Appreciate you participating tonight. If there's nothing else on that, the next presentation is from Keith Massengill, who has some further discussion on the idea of an additional ambulance and potentially a dedicated fire inspector.
Good evening. Yeah, so this isn't anything new to anyone. We've discussed it pretty well over the last couple of years. But the, the need for a additional ambulance is still here. I know that it was removed with the rest of the capital items from the capital budget when COVID hit, and we had to, the city had to basically pull back all the capital items. So basically, you know, the first thing we're talking about is the ambulances, and try and get the commission's opinion on if you want to move forward with that or where we want to head with that. So just to refresh your memory, the ambulance equipped, figuring about $325,000 for basically the one you're seeing on the screen in front of you. We're gonna hopefully have an identical unit to, to what we have or what we recently purchased a couple of years ago. The one, our older one, we call it L18. It has put in a lot of hours over the last eight, nine years since we purchased it. Just a couple of months ago, we had to actually rent an ambulance. We had, we finally found one about three hours away. So we had to rent it, which caused a lot of logistical, we had to unlicense our current one with the state. And actually, it was our new one. It wasn't even our, our older one. The transmission went out and they had to rebuild the transmission. And there's a lot of logistical issues with unlicensing and ambulance relic, licensing the rental, and then swapping it back. Once the, we did receive ours back, we still do borrow one for short-term things when we can, when that's available. And the, the, you know, I've said it before, but usually the typical, once you order an ambulance, it usually takes seven to nine months to build it and to receive it. So even if we said, yeah, let's go ahead with it, more than likely, we're still looking at seven to nine months before we actually receive it, which is of course concerning to me because our L18 was scheduled to be replaced last year from the time it was bought. That's when it was scheduled to be replaced. And we put it off because we started the ambulance service, bought the new one. But my, my biggest concern with that is it's, it's still operational, but it's getting to the point where we're still using it, and we're still using it enough to where I'm concerned that we want to keep that as a backup, as a third ambulance. But I'm concerned we're going to get to the point where it's not going to be functional as a backup just because of its age and the wear and tear that we've, we've put on it being used. Because remember, right now, we have two ambulances, but that one was running every single call for its first seven years of, of its life, every call we ran. So. Next slide, please. So a couple, couple of reasons why we need it, I say now more than ever. With the pandemic going on, we have new decon procedures we have to do for COVID that if we transport, or if, when, because we do at least a couple of times a week, transport a patient who is either COVID positive or highly suspected to be, we have to take that unit out of service and do a thorough decon, which is actually a, a disinfectant fog to the back of the truck, which takes about an hour to an hour and a half. So therefore, that truck's out of service while we're doing the decon on the truck, on the ambulance. So where if we had that third one as a backup, we could put that one in service while the other ones being disinfected and cleaned, and still keep that, the two ambulances in service at all times. If we buy the third ambulance, we'll be able to provide better coverage with the hospital moving. We may or may not, depending on staffing and manpower for the day, be able to put the third ambulance and run calls with it if needed. But even if we don't, the equipment we use off of it, we could treat, we can treat a patient with ALS equipment that we have from the ambulance, and wait for the other ambulance to, one of the other ambulances to clear the hospital if needed. So we can still use the equipment off of it to treat patients and either call another fire department or say the other ambulance is on their way back into town, then, you know, spend two or three minutes treating a patient. The ambulance arrives, and, and we can go ahead and transport the patient with that ambulance. Another thing is our current L18, which is our oldest ambulance, does not have the power load system. So the firefighter paramedics are physically lifting the patient still into the ambulance as opposed to having the power load system, which we have on our new ambulance, that lifts the patient basically for them. And there's a lot of studies on, on the decrease in back injuries that happened because of that. So another reason why we'd, we'd really like to move forward with a third ambulance. Next slide, please. So we talked about, we've talked about in the past, the option of leasing. The ambulance, basically it'd be a lease-to-own with all the capital, or all the equipment and the ambulance that we need to put it on the road, a five-year lease. It's a lease-to-own. So basically, we could lease it, and then after the five years, it'd be ours outright. That's about $70,000 per year if we wanted to look at that option, which is the option we looked at for this current budget year. That's what was in the budget until, till everything had to be removed for COVID. Another option, when I was doing research and just confirming prices, so I wasn't, we had a line with my presentation, is the capital equipment costs about $90,000. And the manufacturer of that is actually over by Kalamazoo. And they're offering 0% financing for three years on that equipment right now. So instead of financing the ambulances and the equipment, if, if the direction the commission wanted to, if, if you wanted to move forward and you wanted to finance just the ambulance, then that is an option. So basically, it would be 80, about $80,000, $81,000 for the first three years. And then it'd only be the $51,000 for the additional two years. So just an option that, that I discovered when, when I was doing the research. One of the things that I found as doing the research is this, the item was pulled out of the capital budget. But we, when the operating budget was, was figured for this year, $70,000 was, was put additional in the budget in the motor vehicle fund to fund this lease. It wasn't transferred into the capital, but an additional $70,000 is already figured into the budget for this purchase. So it's, it's not like we'd have to come up with an additional $70,000 into the motor vehicle fund that we weren't planning on for this year. If that, hopefully that makes sense to you, what I'm, how I'm trying to explain it is. So that's the ambulance. Basically, as Administrator Elliott said, that we're just trying to get your, your feedback is if this is something, I mean, it's something, of course, as you know, that I, I feel pretty passionate about the need for, and we wanted to see if, if we're in a position that it's something we want to get this sent out for bid and back to you for a possible approval. So any questions on, on that, or opinions on if, if, which way we want to head?
I guess one of the questions I would have, Chief Massengill, is I know that you're also going to talk about, you know, a dedicated fire inspector. Is there like one that you're weighing more towards, like as opposed to both, i- if you had to choose between the, or that?
That's a tough question. I don't even know how to answer that because they're both, for say, equally important. They're both life safety issues. And that's, you know, of course, the fire inspector is life safety issues for a different reason, where this is life safety issues to continue providing the service at the, at the level we are and, and having the equipment to do that. The other is having the personnel to do that. So I don't know that I don't know that I can say one's more important than the other.
I just want to know. Thanks.
I challenge you on that. Your, your, your whole profession is life-saving matters and issues. So I, I guess I, I challenge you to come up with an opinion related to that because that is your spot. Everything you do is priceless. Like I can't put a price on you saving my mom's life. But like, let's wrap it up and, and kind of balance it out because we have no clue. Alls I'm seeing is dollars and cents. I need your, I need your expertise on this. What will be the biggest impact? If, if there's, if there's a metric for the city of Adrian, what's the biggest impact? A new ambulance or a fire inspector?
Yeah. And, and like I said, I, I don't know how to, how to do that. I mean, or how to say that.
If you can't, that's fine, but, but I mean, keep thinking about that because that's what we're faced with. I've got to make sense of this. And, and you know it more than I do by far, but in the same right, these are big numbers. These are, these are, I, again, if you're going to save my mom's life, I want you to earn an ambulance that works. If you're going to save the building I'm sitting in right now because of a, a proactive inspection, I want to make sure we've got a good person there. But there is still the economics of it that we have to figure out.
Right. So, so what, I guess the, the good part of that is when we started the ambulance service and you agreed to that, the ambulance service because of insurance reimbursements per se pays for itself. Right? So our additional staffing we put on and we're providing, I, I think it's safe to say a tremendously better service because we have two ambulances on covering the city twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five that has never happened before. But that's basically paying itself. So the seventy thousand dollars per year is actually being reimbursed by the insurance companies to provide the service. So basically we're taking the income off of the ambulance transports and giving it back to citizens, citizens and providing a better service. And I know that, that's kind of not answering your question whatsoever of what's more important. So that is something I'll have to think about because I
I don't think, and I don't think important is the right word. They're both immeasurably important. But, but we, we have to somehow, because, because if, if we're going to leave the emotional side in it, Eric, you'd have an endless budget and we'd be broke.
Alright, oh absolutely. Yeah. And, and I mean, that's, that's the difficult part is, you know, I present you with what I think we need. And the difficult part is, is, is not an endless budget, which, which isn't, isn't an easy thing.
Exactly why I asked that question because that's what I wondered. So, yes.
I think we're, I, I think we're Commissioner Watson's getting from Chief Massville is that, you know, I was on the commission when we reduced it from when the safer grant went away, we reduced from eighteen to fifteen. That was a big, big meeting when it comes to the public, you know, making, you know, making the public feel safe. So, so I think his comment, you know, Commissioner Watson's comment about, you know, the heartstrings are, are, and, and we will never know what you guys did day to day. Ever. I have witnessed it once and I see what kind of level of service you guys provide, but you know, where we at actually with the, you know, when it comes to the fiscal year, what net gain are we going to get from the ambulance service? Like where, like, like, like from a, again, this was not a business decision for me when we opted in this, it was more of a get the staffing levels up, let's get the guys and gals fully staffed so they're not being ran on the ground, you know, because you guys are so busy. So but I also didn't know numbers too, because I'd like to know where, you know, where we're at with that. Do you have a net gain? Are we flush or, or, or where are we at?
So, excuse me, when we, basically the, the, what I would say is a break even point. Adding the six firefighters, the equipment, putting the seventy thousand dollars away every year for additional ambulance supplies, all those things, we're running about seven hundred and thirty-five to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with, with our six additional personnel, plus all the stuff that we need to, to run the ambulance. Where we're at right now, covid through, we were on track. I don't have it, actually I do have it in front of me. So over the last year, I gotta find, it's on our own computer. We were just over nine hundred thousand dollars in revenue, and I gotta find it, pulled it up, there it is. So over the last year, the last twelve months, we have brought in actually about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So for say net revenue, if you're looking at the dollars and cents, we're definitely ahead of where we thought we'd be because our goal was to break even and provide a better service. You know, from the fire department perspective, I'm not talking for the commission. I'm saying that, you know, if we could provide a better service and break even, that, that was our goal. Now covid has put a, a damper on it because people stopped going to the hospital. So that has reduced it, but it is also the last two months began to get back to where we were pre-covid. And also we did get the CARES Act money, funding to kind of supplement that because the federal government knew that that was going to happen and they couldn't have ambulance services going out of business. So that's where we're at right now. Like I said, the last couple of months since covid hit, we're for say down, but we're still well above that seven hundred and fifty-three thousand in the la- over the last year.
And also kind of piggybacking on that. So I remember in the capital meeting, you said that the fire inspector job, you also request, so once we, you know, when we hire staff, you have legacy costs, you have benefits, but also you're requesting a vehicle also for that individual. So is that something you're going to be requesting this time or, or is this, are we just kind of you want to see, take our temperature on both these options or, or, or both these things you're requesting?
Right. So, so at this point, basically what I had planned before, so the vehicle I'm driving is sixteen years old. And that was also in the budget for this budget year. And of course I got, that got taken out also. Which is fine. I mean, I, I've always said I need an ambulance way more than I need a, a chief's vehicle. But that was the original plan was to get another vehicle and, and use the, the chief's vehicle, current chief's vehicle as a, as a inspector vehicle. So basically by one. At this point, and, and I've got over our slides for the inspector position also. But at this point, we, I mean, we have a, a brush truck to, that the inspector could use pickup truck with it. To use there, it's not that we can't find something for them to drive around. It's not economical to arrive an engine by any means. But, you know, if we have to use the brush truck, we'll use the brush truck. You know, if, if there's another vehicle in the city not being used, you know, that, that truly is just a, a vehicle, would just be a vehicle to get around. So that's not something I'm looking at currently. We'll, we'll figure out a way, like I said, even if it's the brush truck to, to get the inspector out. It's budgets are tight and, and I fully respect that. So that's, that's not really what I'm looking for today.
I think so. Both of these position, both of these options are items that can pay for themselves. And that's why I, I was interested in having the chief present them to you. And I, I mean, part parcel of the fire inspector option is them establishing a program for regular fire inspections like we're supposed to be doing.
We see the slides associated with that then?
Yep, yep, absolutely. I just didn't want to jump into that and, and, you know, forget this. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So the fire inspector position, like I said, this is, is mostly a review, but basically the trades inspectors, the plumbing inspector, billing inspector, electrical inspector, they do their inspections when a building's built or remodeled to ensure it's, it's safe. But once you get an occupancy permit, there's nobody right now in the city that makes sure the building stays safe. We talked about twenty years ago, the fire department did it, but it was a, it didn't work is, is why the fire department stopped doing it twenty years ago. So basically it's a, a, a way to ensure the building stays safe after the certificate of occupancy is granted by the, the inspectors who originally did the inspection. You know, just using the mall for an example, a lot of the issues that led to it being condemned could have been caught earlier in doing regular inspections of that facility and well before they turned into a kind of a snowball of you know, basically it could have been caught as small problems as opposed to turning into big problems. So that's, that's kind of the, the thing that we can do as, as the fire inspections or with the fire inspections. Basically, we'd want to prevent large incidents, loss of life, large dollar loss, prevent fires, prevent injuries, handle the public education, at least the organizing of that, like the kid, kid stuff in the schools, that sort of thing. So currently the city ordinance has job, basically is spelled out what I'm responsible for. And in the past, it was delegated, like I said, this is twenty years ago to the firefighters. But that didn't work. So if you can go to the next slide, please, this just kind of lays out what the city ordinance actually says. And this is just expert excerpt of it. So basically I'm responsible for prevention, prevention and extinguishment of fires, protection of life and property against fire, removal of fire hazards, conducting educational fire prevention program, enforcing state laws and, and provisions of the code to prevent fires, storage of flammable and explosives. And basically making sure people's properties are maintained in a fire-safe manner is what the rest of it says to not read it all to you. So basically I'm responsible for that and I've been trying to keep up with that, but in turn, the fire chief's job is not getting done. Like in the last probably month, month and a half, I've spent probably two thirds of my time doing inspections and, and special related stuff. And that's only trying to keep up with construction or remodels, not even going out and doing inspections on, on buildings that are currently occupied or being used. So therefore I'm not able to get the, the, the other fire chief duties done that I'm supposed to be doing. We do have two other fire inspectors. They're trying to do it in between running calls and it's, it's very hard to make it convenient for the business owners because of their schedule on twenty-four hour shifts than my schedule and trying to make it, you know, a lot of times we're having to put it off a week, week and a half, two weeks and then and it's just not convenient to try and even, like I said, that's not even doing the, the maintenance type inspections. That's just trying to get people into their buildings that they're remodeling. So next slide, please. So those are some of the things that I'm supposed to be doing. The fire inspector actually is kind of turning into a life safety inspector. There's a lot more things, there's a lot of things in the code book for life safety, but they also have been found recently, unfortunately, to prevent loss of life, active shooter incidents, that sort of thing. We call them a fire exit. But in turn, there's a Walmart down south that somebody came in the front door with the, with, with a gun and they used the exits that if they were blocked or they're not accessible or not there, they wouldn't have been able to get out. So it's not only were we doing fire inspections, but it's, it's a total life safety thing. So one of the other laws that I'm responsible to, to comply with in the state is doing, making sure that what's called the firefighter right to no law. And basically I have to survey all of the businesses in the city and to figure out what kind of hazards they have. We did this, it hadn't been done since nineteen ninety-four that we could find. So we did this last year and out of a hundred, or I'm sorry, a thousand, over a thousand surveys, a hundred and forty-seven were returned. So unfortunately, that means that somebody has to physically go to the businesses to see what kind of hazards they have. If they have hazards, we have to report on them and we have to make an actual site-specific plan of how we will operate if there's a fire in that building that, to keep the firefighter safe. Just another one of the things that the, the fire inspector would be responsible for because the fire inspector would be in these buildings already. So that's what we're, we're trying to incorporate all these things and, and, and most fire departments do. It's not something that we're just trying to do on our own. So if you go to the next slide, please, these are just some pictures of some, some, for say violations that we found. Some things that aren't good and, and some things that the fire inspector would be responsible for. If you can just go through these slides, these pictures, just show them live electrical wires hanging from the ceiling, exposed. This actually was the roof leaking into that emergency light that was live electricity. But then go to the next one, please. That sprinkler system was not designed for all that plastic. And, and the fire load would have overrun the, the sprinkler system if there were a fire in there. This one is a, actually the exits blocked with all these boxes and the exit signs taken down. These are all things that we would find on fire inspections and be able to say, okay, this, this needs to be fixed. You know, either immediately or you'd have thirty days. This, these were propane tanks in a restaurant. They were hooked to a to a griddle grill, which is a huge safety hazard having propane and an assembly occupancy. This was actually a hood system in a commercial kitchen that is supposed to be cleaned every six months. And the only ones that really make sure that happens is a fire inspector. As you can see, that's all dust and dirt, caked in grease. And all it takes is a, a little fire to cause a, a huge fire and a huge issue in this hood system. So these are all the things that a fire inspector would, would be responsible to make sure that these are being taken care of. And, and we talked about before, assembly occupancies by state law are supposed to be inspected every year. So that's the kind of things that would, would be picked up on by a fire inspector before they got to that, that severity. Another thing is, we just literally last week got our ISO designation. We stayed at a four and ISO is what insurance companies use to figure out rates of everybody in the city. They can use those numbers. Basically they rate the water system, the dispatch system and the fire department to say, how likely is it that we would have a major loss? And if it's not very likely, then you'd get better rates. So currently we're a four, but we were only one point two six points from a class three designation. So community risk reduction is what the fire inspector would fall under. Reducing the risk in the community. There's two point two nine more points we could have gotten in that. Hence a, a fire inspector could, well, would earn more points because we would actually be out doing inspections because that's one of the things that they, they give a lot of points. Are you out in your community trying to prevent major losses for the insurance companies? There's also three point eight more points available for hydrant maintenance that we're going to look at trying to more than likely fire inspector won't have time. But like I said, I have two fire inspectors on shift that are trying to keep up with the fire inspections and that would free more people up to work on hydrant maintenance. So I think it's very realistic. We could save the, the taxpayers' money to a class three designation, adding a fire inspector. Next slide, please. Funding, possible funding type options, like we talked about before, depending on your occupancy, either it'd be twice a year, once a year, once every other year or once every three years. Depending on what hazards, you know, typical office building. depending on what hazards, you know, typical office building, every three years is, is plenty, just to make sure it's safe. Somebody with high hazards, twice a year. Somebody in between would fall in between there. And as we talked about before, the, the, there are some municipalities that don't charge anything. Not a lot of them, but there are some that do that. Some charge a flat rate, which is an option. One thing that, that I did find doing my research is there are some places that charge per square foot with a minimum fee. So if you have a very small, it, it, it costs a certain amount just to do the paperwork and take the time. So, you know, say a $75 fee, if it's a small place, it's probably every three years to go out and do the fire inspection. I figured it would cost about two cents per square foot per inspection. And this is an estimation. There's over 9 million square feet in the city of commercial and industrial space. But not all of that would need to be done every year. Some will be done twice a year, some will be done every three years. So that to me is, is a good starting point to fund this, this position would be a fee for service, no different than the building inspector, electrical inspector. I believe the rental housing inspector, there may be a fee for that. Basically, it's, it's a fee for the service we're providing to make sure that we're, we're making sure the citizens and the, the, or the citizens are safe and reducing the amount of risk for high-dollar losses. So that's how Minister Early and I talked about how this position could pay for itself, or at least come close, is a fee. And that was, you know, two cents per square foot is a starting point to, to try and make up the cost of this. It, it would be charged, I, I looked at some different places, In Arborco charges six and a half cents per square foot unless it's over 50,000 square foot, then they're four and a half cents per square foot. They were the, the highest that I could find. But there, you know, so it's everywhere in between. So that's what we're looking at is, is the possibility to charge a fee for the service.
Chief, I think this is something that needs to be taken offline because just like the ambulance service when we were evaluating that, there's a lot of variables in here and, and, and I mean, if, if we think we can make it break even, that's an easy one for us to decide and all of a sudden, we don't have to choose between what, you know, which one's more valuable, an ambulance or this. If this can, if this can cash flow, that's pretty easy. Or if we have, there's a reasonable model to maintain a business-friendly environment, let's figure it out. But I mean, let's take it offline and do it and really get after it.
Yeah, that's what I would suggest is that we pencil it out and we're open to it, bring it back to you in a, in a fashion that would work within our budget. I think, I think these are both very important things and if we can pay for them.
Yeah, I feel like if we can pay for them, I, I would, you know, by, by these different avenues, I would really be even more inclined, I know there's, they're very important, but you know, it's also hard sometimes to justify. But I feel like if we could have those, those numbers in front of us and really see that and really be able to digest that to make those educated decisions, that would be really helpful.
Chief, I think one thing that we haven't talked about is, is that, you know, something to take into consideration in the analysis is how is this going to improve the buyer's experience? So, so whether it's the contractor, whether it's the, you know, the, the, the business owner, whether it's the tenant, how is it going to positively impact all of them? Because just charging them a fee and saying, hey, we're cash flowing an inspector, that's not good. Or it's good, it's fine because there's logical reasons why we need it. But we still have to sell this idea of, of somebody else needing to buy this service or to use this service, even if it's the art ordinance, like, hey, this is good because they're going to come out in two days rather than five days. Or, you know, or, or there's going to be less, I don't even know. There's going to be less revisions after you've closed up some drywall and come back or, or whatever the, the real pain points are for these people. How are we going to increase their, or, or improve their experience? And, and you get to pay a fee for it, but you're going to get this. That's just human nature on the, on the buyer side.
Okay, well, we'll work, work on that and work on bringing something precise back to you. We do have a couple other items here for the pre-meeting and we're running low on time. Appreciate it. We'll keep working on that.
Thank you.
Tamara, I think you're up next.
Okay. As always, I'm going to end up having to talk fast. So the first thing that you have on the agenda for me is the proposed special window for marijuana applications in October. And just to keep that brief, I'll just say that there were some changes that happened with regard to the MRA after the last time we spoke about this. In fact, their bulletin came out on the date of our last meeting indicating that they were going to make changes to their fees for licensees. Those fees are paid at the time that the license is issued. They pay application fee first and then there's a registration fee that they pay on the backend. Effective October 1st, those fees will be drastically reduced and will save the cannabis industry businesses quite a bit of money. For instance, if they have a Class C permit from us, they would save $13,000 for each permit with the state. So if they have 10 of those, that's $130,000 in licensing fees that they would save if they're able to wait until October 1st to have their license go into effect. So for that reason, I've extended the enforcement deadline that we had for current permit holders to get licensed. I've extended that to October 9th and I will be sending out notifications to all of them on that. That will allow them to get their CFO with us this month and still schedule their final inspection from the MRA during October so that they can take advantage of that fee reduction. And then from there, I would recommend that the one-time special application window that we previously discussed be open from 8:00 AM Monday, October 5th until the close of business Friday, October 30th, giving those limited companies that meet the qualifications a 20-business-day window to be able to apply. Because we're short for time tonight, I won't go back over the requirements for application, but I will send those back out to the commission this week so that you can give me any additional input before I bring this to you in the form of a resolution at the next meeting. And then we'll, we'll bring that to the next agenda for your consideration so that it could take effect in October. So again, it would be proposing that it would be from October 5th to October 30th for the special window for adult use permit applications and would also extend the enforcement deadline for getting your full state license until October 9th, which should leave is the second Friday in October. So that's all I have on that tonight. Mayor Heath, I guess I would ask you, you spoke earlier about being excited about the air pollution ordinance that I've been working on. Would you like me to reschedule this for the next pre-meeting so that there can be a longer discussion about it? And in the meantime, we could put the proposed ordinance onto the website so that residents will have a chance to look it over and companies who might be affected by it will also have a chance. Because I really don't think that I can cover it in the short time that we have left and still allow you time for a public comment.
I agree. I think we need to look at, to look at and the, the draft and, and to be able to discuss that fully and, and have enough time for that. I think it should be, if, if everybody else is in agreement, I am definitely for moving that to the next pre-meeting.
And then the only other thing that I had was some input with regard to the conduct in parks resolution, but I can address that during public comment in the regular meeting when you bring up the ordinance and I can go into those details at that time so that you can save time for public comments.
All right, seeing that we are in the time limit that we are, I am going to open it up at this point for public comment.
Commissioner and Mayor, Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. I want to commend you on one of the best pre-meetings I've ever been part of. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioners and Mayor.
Go ahead.
This is Scott Marvin, St. Creek Highway. I would like to comment on the wild animal feeding in the city. I wasn't the one that brought this to the commission, but I have witnessed several locations where citizens are feeding the deer and geese in the city limits. I've seen a nice arrangement of fruit, potatoes, watermelon sitting out for the deer and large amount of corn stored in containers for the geese. This is very concerning to me. This is both a health hazard and a blatant concern. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned and we will begin again in just a few minutes. Thank you. Greg, are you ready to begin with our Zoom information?
I am. Evening, everyone. I'm interim city administrator Greg Elliott. It's seven o'clock. I'd like to address a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls us to order. For much of the meeting, we asked the participants, other than the commissioners and staff, to mute themselves, allow the commission to have their discussions and conduct their business. That will also help to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at different points throughout the meeting. At those times, participants can unmute themselves and an opportunity to address the commission will be provided. The three-minute rule continues to be in effect for the public comment period at the end of the meeting. When it is time for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, the format and structure will be the exact same as it is in an in-person meeting and we will work through our agenda items as usual. All commission rules and procedures remain in effect. We've talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. These cases have increased over time. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. We hope to conduct our meeting free of this interruption, but we will temporarily shut down the meeting if this happens. Our agenda will be displayed on the screen and anyone wishing to access the full commission packet can find it at www.adriancity.com. Thank you all for participating tonight. Mayor Heath, I'll turn it over to you.
I call to order the September 8, 2020 meeting of the Adrian City Commission. If everyone can please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hope.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Gauz.
Present.
All commission members present.
Just a reminder to the commission today, when we ask for a motion, I ask that you do state your last name after you give the motion, after you are the one that gives the motion, or if you give the second, to make it easier on us. That worked well last time. Thank you very much for that. May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the August 17, 2020 regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
So move.
Support. Strayer.
Oh, help. All right.
I got that.
Come in, you got to cut me some slack.
I have a motion from Commissioner Health with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauz.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
Make it a motion to approve the minutes of the August 18, 2020 special meeting of the Adrian City Commission.
So move, Roberts.
Support, Watson.
I have a motion from- I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
So moved, Roberts.
Support, Strayer.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to amend the agenda for item ordinance 20-006 to read first reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend section 62-39 and 62-40 of chapter 62 of the Adrian City Code Use of Parks and chapter 62 of the Adrian City Code by adding such section 62-44 camping.
So moved, Roberts.
Support, Gauss.
I have a motion to amend ordinance 20, to amend the agenda for ordinance 20-006. The motion is by Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
First reading, there's no roll call.
Oh, to amend the agenda.
Oh, gotcha. We can't, do we have a moment to comment? I get that's just a matter of the agenda. I feel like there's some explanation that's needed at this point in time for, I see a lot of people on here that are probably interested in this, that they're, I mean, we're changing this to a first reading from a second reading, what that means, why we're doing what we're doing, and so on. That's all I'm.
And Tamara's is going to cover that when, sorry, Tamara Hennigan, our city attorney, she's actually going to speak on that when we, when we get to that item. But would you prefer that she speak on it now? She can.
I, I, it was just an educational piece. There's, like I said, I think there's a lot of people very interested in this item. And so I just, whenever you see fit, Mayor.
Yep. Um, I'm going to ask at this time, before we vote on this motion, to change it to a first reading. Can you provide an explanation for us, please, City Attorney Tamara Hennigan?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So, as you said, there's a lot of people here interested, and we've heard a lot of information here at City Hall about what some of those concerns are. So I want to address both why we're changing it to a first reading, and also some of the concerns that we've heard throughout the past couple of weeks, and hopefully give a little clarity to what the ordinance actually reads. So we're changing it to a first reading from a second reading because we did receive a few comments over the last few weeks that were concerns that commissioners had with regard to whether the trail would be able to be used throughout the day for people who jog early in the morning when it might still be dark out, or late in the evening, they want to walk their dogs, so on and so forth. So section 6239 was not, did not previously have amendments to it. And we have looked at, I'm sorry. Is that wrong? Section 6240 that under the section eight, we have added in the foregoing notwithstanding, nothing herein shall be construed as prohibiting a person from using a trail in a fashion that involves continuous movement along the trail regardless of the time of day. And then we also took into consideration one of the sections in the new part 6244 that listed public property, and that was changed to just public park. So because those two items changed the scope of the amendment, I've asked that the commission back up the process, go back to a first reading. The public was expecting this ordinance to be on the agenda tonight. Had they not been expecting it at all, I probably would have asked you to wait till the, till the next meeting. But being that they've reviewed this, and these are minor amendments, I'm asking you to back up to a first reading and start the process over again. And then you can review it for a second reading at the next meeting. So that's the reason for the motion to amend the agenda. With regard to the other concerns that we've heard, we've heard a lot of things just kind of through the grapevine. Today I did reach out to one member in the community that I had contact information for to kind of just try to figure out what was going on in the community, because I've not personally spoken to anyone who has been actively involved in questioning the upcoming changes. But some of the things we've heard were that people might be upset that they felt that this would be a municipal civil infraction if the camping prohibition is put into place. We heard that they're concerned about shelter for homeless or transient individuals at night, and them not being allowed to be in the park. Those were the biggest things. And so what I wanted to address is, and point out, is that this amendment is more of a clarification language than it really is a change to our code. Our code since at least 1972 has specifically stated in section 6240, use of parks, that no person shall loiter, be, or remain in, in or upon any public park or public playground in the city between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So therefore, it has always been illegal to stay the night in the park. This is not something new that we're putting in place, rather that we're clarifying and saying it's illegal to stay the night in the park, and you also can't set up a tent to stay the night in the park without having a special use permit. But this is not a change other than we changed the times from sunset to sunrise, and that was specifically to, to go along with our daylight savings time that we have here in Michigan, so that the parks would always be open during daylight times, no matter what the time of year is, and its language that's used in many other municipalities for that same reason. So that was the reason for the change in time. Additionally, I would point out that the reason this came about is that there's been a lot of littering in the parks, a lot of abandoned property in the parks, and that it has never been legal to litter in the park either. That section 6234 addresses that it is a civil infraction to litter in the park and not put the things into the trash cans. Section 6231 has always expanded, has always had a scope of allowing the city to have these rules expand beyond the parks to any recreational area that we have management over. So that would include the trails. So this is not really a change when we include the trail, just more so clarification, so that the public, when they read the ordinance, understands that the trail falls under these guidelines. We have also always had permits for special events. Alcohol has never been allowed in the park without a permit, and that is a big issue that we're facing, finding glass bottles in the park. We're finding hypodermic needles in the park. Our staff from DPW are having to clean those things up, and that puts them at risk, as we all understand, for health issues. Sometimes patrons using the park are coming across those things when they have small children with them, and so on. So this amendment to the ordinance initially came about as us trying to make sure that the parks are safe for use for all residents, particularly when everyone wants to get out of the house during COVID, and the park is the only place the governor is encouraging us to go to. So that's how this all came about. But in that process, we recognized as municipality that there is a homeless population that may be affected by this amendment, and that's why we took the initiative to create resource cards. We made, purposely made the resource cards smaller so that they could be carried by an individual who may need to keep it on their person. We purposely laminated the resource cards so that they would not be easily destroyed by someone who might be subject to more elements than others are, or that needs to keep it in a backpack or something like that. We have designated areas to put up plastic boxes where they can pick up resource cards and information, and those will be protected from the elements. And then we've created some signs that will be posted in the parks to remind them of these things that are prohibited, but also to give a phone number to call if your abandoned property is picked up. And that too is not something new. We've been picking up abandoned property out of the parks, but without knowing who the owners were, our staff were left to speak with other individuals who may be in the park the next day and say, hey, if you see your buddy, tell him we have his stuff. But by posting a phone number and creating a process, the DPD, DPW staff has agreed to keep those items for up to five days, and an individual can call them and come and claim their belongings so that they're not losing what might be everything that they have. We wanted to be sure that we were taking that into consideration as well. So I think that we have taken a lot of things into consideration, and I see someone's asking the question, are we assuming all in need can read and see clearly? And no, I don't want to make that assumption in any way whatsoever, but I am saying that we've done what's possible for us to do to take this population into consideration while still trying to be considerate of the needs of the community in using the parks, and that's kind of an overview of how this came about.
Thank you, Attorney Hennigan. So I have a motion to amend the agenda for ordinance 20-006 to be a first reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend section 6239 and 6240 of chapter 62 of the Adrian City Code, Use of Parks and chapter 62 of the Adrian City Code by adding such section 6244 camping. That amendment, the motion for the amendment was by Roberts with, Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
The motion to amend the agenda to change ordinance 20006 to a first reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend section 62-39 and 62-40 of chapter 62 of the Adrian City Code, Use of Parks and chapter 62 of the Adrian City Code by adding section 62-44 camping was approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to amend the agenda and to table, for us to table resolution 20-156 until September 21, 2020, for further negotiation?
I move resolution R20-156 to September 21. Roberts.
Support, Strayer.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
The motion to amend the agenda to table R2156 till September 21, September 21 for further negotiation is approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to ordinances. Ordinance 20-005, second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend section 58-186 of chapter 58 of the Adrian City Code, public consumption of possession or possession of alcoholic liquor. I'm going to at this time ask our city attorney, Attorney Hennigan, to please give us some more clarification on this ordinance.
This one is a lot simpler than the others. It's simply adding an exception for the new DARA district that the commission has previously approved. Currently, our ordinance reads that you cannot have alcohol out in public, and this creates an, an exception for the DARA district.
Ordinance 20-006, first reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend section.
Mayor. Mayor.
Yes.
You have to vote on this.
You're right. Sorry, sorry. I got ahead of myself. Sorry. So may I get a motion for ordinance 20-005?
So moved, Watson.
Support, Help.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Health. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Ordinance approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion for ordinance 20-006, first reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend sections 62-39 and 62-40 of chapter 62 of the Adrian City Code, Use of Parks, and chapter 62 of the Adrian City Code by adding section 62-44 camping.
So first reading, Mayor, we don't need a motion at this point in time.
Oh, it's a first reading. See, now I'm getting myself confused. You're right. Sorry about that. Moving on. May I get a motion for ordinance 20-007? It is a second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend section 3.1 of Article III of the City of Adrian zoning ordinance, and the zoning map to which reference is therein made, to the extent of deleting the property at 115 East Sienna Heights Drive from our four single-family residential district, and including the same in the B2 community business district. Well, go, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion, but I am going to ask for clarification for us as well from our interim City Administrator Greg Elliott. Do you want, go ahead, Greg, and then I'll ask for the motion. Go ahead.
You want me to go first?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is a reselling of the lots that are immediately behind the proposed Black Slum Coffee Shop, which fronts on Main Street. The idea is to have this land available for off-street parking for the facility.
Thank you. May I get a motion for ordinance 20-007?
Move to approve, Watson.
Support, Strayer.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mayor, shouldn't there be public comment and commissioner comment on these matters?
I did not think so in ordinance. I thought that was only in resolutions, but I could be wrong on that. I didn't have that in my thing. Sorry about that.
No, I, I just, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what the right answer is either, but we haven't discussed these matters or heard discussion on them at the first reading. So I just thought that it would be appropriate. Maris, do you have any feeling on this?
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Watson, that, that is the correct procedure.
Okay, thank you. So an ordinance 20-007, second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend section 3.1 of Article III of the City of Adrian zoning ordinance, and the zoning map to which reference is therein made, to the extent of deleting the property at 115 East Sienna Heights Drive from our four single-family residential district, and including the same in the B2 community business, business district. I, right now, have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Is there any public comment?
Commissioner, Mayor and Commissioners, is there any reason why we didn't go back to the first two ordinances and have public comment for those?
We will need to go back to the first one, but the second one's only a first reading. It got amended.
Well, hey, my, my, excuse me, my agenda says second reading for 005, second reading for 006, second reading for 007 and 008. Tell me where I'm wrong.
Yeah, we just amended 006 to be a first reading. That was the discussion that we had before we ordinance this. Sorry about that.
What about 007? Well, never mind. Excuse me. I apologize.
No, sorry. So on ordinance 20-007, is there any public comment? Is there any commissioner? Is there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by unanimous vote.
Um, Attorney Henigan, can you advise on ordinance twenty dash zero zero five? Since we did already vote on it, is it okay to go back and revisit that for public comment and commissioner comment?
Yes, I was gonna wait for you to finish your last ordinance and then advise that you go back to the top and ask for public comment on ordinance two zero dash zero zero five. At this time, if there is no public comment, your vote can stand. But if there is any additional comment, I would advise that you take a second roll call vote on that.
Okay, thank you. So I'll move on and then I will go back to ordinance twenty dash zero zero five. Ordinance twenty dash zero zero eight is a second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend section three point one of Article Three of the City of Adrian zoning ordinance and the zoning map to which reference is therein made to the extent of deleting the property at three zero seven each East Beecher Street from the B two community business district and including the same in the P one parking district. May I have a motion? For this ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance. Or prove it, Roberts.
Support Hou.
Is there any public comment?
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Commissioners and Mayor, as a member of the planning commission, I absolutely support this request and, and encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Um, this is one I've done some research on Article twenty two, uh, P one vehicular parking district. The intent, as written in our documents, the P one vehicular parking district is intended to permit the establishment of areas to be used solely for off-street parking of private passenger vehicles as a use incidental to a principal use. This district will generally be provided by petition or request to serve a use district which has developed without adequate off-street parking facilities. The current building and structure that is on that lot has more than enough parking, and I do not see a need for this parking district to be established. And, and with that, a follow-up comment. Uh, Mr. Taylor, as, as you are present and have spoken, I absolutely in one hundred percent respect and appreciate the work that the planning commission has done. I just feel a difference of opinion on this matter. And, and that's where my basis is.
Hearing no more commissioner comments. I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash zero zero eight from Roberts with a Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
No.
Commissioner Strayer.
You're on mute.
No.
Commissioner Gauss.
No.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Okay, it died because it's a tie vote. So it's yes, three yes and three no.
Okay, I'm going to go back and revisit. I do apologize. Sorry, we had a lot of changes today. An ordinance twenty dash zero zero five, second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend section fifty eight dash one eighty six of chapter fifty eight of the Adrian City Code, public consumption or possession of alcoholic liquor. I have a, the motion was given by Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Hou. Is there any public comment? Hearing no public comment, since we did already vote on this and it did pass unanimously, we will move on. Resolutions. Resolution R twenty dash one fifty two is from Parks and Engineering. It is a resolution to amend the fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty one budget to properly fund the dog park project. May I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Support Strayer.
Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments?
Anna Mayor, I have a question I want to ask Matt, if that's possible.
Go ahead.
Matt, are you there?
I'm here.
Yeah. Um, I've been asked a question a couple of times over the past week. Um, what was believed to bring a project of about thirty thousand dollars? We need another ten, which is basically an increase of a third. How'd that come about?
Sure. So when we went through the options of putting up a dog park, uh, we actually had a pre-meeting discussion about this. Um, the original estimate was twenty five thousand dollars and that would put up a fence and a couple amenities. Commission decided to do a little bit more than that. Have a walkway, have a water feature and a couple more amenities. So, um, it all kind of added up and we total to date, we've, we spent about thirty two thousand dollars. And then there will be some, maybe some trees or some, uh, bushes to kind of spruce up the, the area. But this was discussed during a pre-meeting, uh, back in.
Well, I, I remember that, that discussion. I just, I remember it being around thirty thousand dollars and not forty thousand dollars. That's, you know, and I, I guess my thinking is if it was going to increase that much, maybe we should have another discussion, another pre-meeting to say, hey, you know, just so you guys know, it's gonna be more than you expected.
I apologize. I thought I said it would be about thirty five thousand. I, I can look at my notes, too.
Well, that's fine, but if thirty five thousand, you don't need another ten thousand. If it's, if it started at thirty and now it's thirty five.
It started at twenty five thousand.
It started at twenty five thousand.
Yes.
So you need another ten to get to thirty two. Plus whatever.
What's that again?
I understand. Thanks.
Any other commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty dash one fifty three is from Parks and Engineering. It is a resolution to amend the fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty one budget to properly fund repairs to the Adrian Skate Park. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Help.
Support Roberts.
Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, if I might?
Go ahead.
Um, skate park, that's one of those resources that I never use, but it is one of the funnest things to watch. And, and I, I fully support this. It, it always shocks me the number of kids that are down there. Just skating, having fun, fellowship. It, this is a nice little perk for our city.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty dash one fifty four is from Parks and Engineering. It is a resolution to amend the fee schedule for yard waste and the compost site. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adapt the resolution, Roberts.
Support Gauss.
Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Um, uh, we talked about this in, in pre-meeting, um, I believe once, if not twice. If my memory serves me right, this is the first time I've seen numbers. And if I missed these numbers at, at a prior time, I accept full responsibility for that. And, and I can make it very personal, having a, a family member with a small lawn business. Uh, I'm not sure this all makes entire sense. I, I think, you know, the, one of the great things this is doing is communicating out the beautiful dirt that we do have and have accumulated and made over time. But, but where, where I'm getting at is, is the, the commercial landscape businesses. Um, I don't know how many we have throughout the city that might be a guy, a truck, a trailer, a couple mowers, cutting mostly city grass versus the larger commercial operations that are cutting a lot of grass in a lot of spaces. I, I, I would like to see further consideration on, on maybe how to address the commercial landscape business. It, it, address that more on a, maybe a volume basis rather than a, a flat yearly fee. Additionally, I would just like, uh, Mr. Tomajewski to kind of expand on what capacity we have, both on the manpower side, but as well as the physical site side to take the time to compost this stuff right, to, to be able to continue to produce dirt. You know, what kind of metrics and measurements do we have in there? That this is a good decision even to discuss using or allowing commercial landscape businesses without even knowing what the, the adoption rate would be. You know, the big guys, they might have their own yards where they're already doing this. Where they, this is a non-issue to them. But you know, if we get twenty little guys with a full truck every couple of days, you know, what, what, what does that do to our compost site and, and the restriction that it might put on the, the normal people that are taking out a couple of bags a week from their own lawn?
Yeah, certainly, Brett. So our site certainly has the capacity for, uh, the upage and, um, and yard waste. We've maintained our site quite well recently and it's, uh, we, we organize it to allow for this capacity change. The, the only issue that I, I could see coming is the manpower issue. Of course, the more you have, the more you have to maintain. So at, at some point in time, I, it would be my hope to, um, have a part-time or full-time employee at the compost site all the time. This could be someone that's maintaining the, the rows, pushing up the piles, collecting tickets. We could open up the compost site for more than two days. During our, our past year, we went through and kind of did, did our own investigation in compost site usage. A lot of the surrounding areas that have compost sites are all solely ran by the revenue from sold material. That is my goal in the end. Also to bring in revenue in order to keep the cost low for our residents. By doing that, by increasing revenue from outside businesses and residents, we can increase that cost by keeping the cost low for our residents. I don't have, I don't see any issues in the future with the size of our site being an issue. We've got plenty of space out there for growth.
Okay. I guess I just, I asked the commission to, to kind of, I don't know, reconsider this component for a later date on the commercial side. I don't know if we want to start talking about the other two sub-pieces of it, but I don't think that commercial landscape number is, is quite right to address everybody. It could be, that could be a material amount for a smaller guy and immaterial amount for the bigger guys. And, and really, um, you know, if the, if the bigger guys start using this as much as they could, that five hundred dollars isn't gonna cost our maintenance or, or cover our maintenance or required maintenance on maintaining those piles, rotating it, sifting it and things like that.
If I may jump back in, um, this, this is absolutely a trial year. Of course, we reached out and asked for numbers from other areas. But this, Adrian's different than everyone else around us, so, um, this would be a trial year. We would see what happens and in the end we would, uh, adjust accordingly.
So I guess that, um, what Commissioner Watson is asking then is, um, for a, a motion to table this, um, is there a motion to table resolution R twenty dash one fifty four to look at at a late, in the, in the near future here to later date at their next meeting, maybe? I don't know what I'm supposed to say there, but.
We, if it's, if it's tabled, then we have to address it at the next meeting.
Right.
Commissioner Watson, it can be tabled, it just has to have a specific date for you to come back to it or say indefinite. So it would either be the next meeting or you could even push it up four weeks if you wanted to. So long as you have a specific date in that motion.
Okay, I stand corrected. I'm one person, so I mean, if there is a commission wants to move forward, move, but that's, I, I.
I'm confused on the commercial side of where, where, where the issue is. I'm exactly, again, I don't, I'm not in that business. I didn't mow my own grass, so I don't, I don't know.
Right, so your contractor that doesn't mow your grass also mows grass all over the county. So he's gonna bring that grass to our site, maybe, right? Is five hundred dollars enough to manage the volume that your contractors bringing to the site? Knowing that compost isn't just a matter of sitting there and letting it decompose. It takes some working and some science behind it versus the guy that maybe mows your neighbor's yard who might have one half-ton pickup truck load a week to, to bring out to the site. To me, the guy with one pickup truck isn't requiring nearly the service that the guy with six full crews is, is requiring if they both use it as their only depository for clippings.
Listen, Matt has put some thought into this and he said, this is a trial year. So let's try it out, see how it works. We can always make adjustments. Now, is this commercial, is this per, is it per business or per truck? I mean, because like you said, even sometimes you have one man shows, right? You know, one or two guys out, out on a truck, you know, one guy cuts, one guy trims. So I mean, or is this like, like some companies have fleets of vehicles? So I guess I'm confused on is it five hundred bucks for, say, Mobians? When they have, you know, twenty trucks, you know, compared, so is it, is it per truck or is it per? How we know, like, I, I guess Matt, like, so is it per truck or is it per company?
The intent is per company.
Okay.
But of course, this is up for discussion, so if you guys choose to do, do per truck.
I understand what Commissioner Watson is trying to get at, I believe. And he does bring up some really good points. So I think at this point, I would like to rescind my motion. So I think at this point, I would like to rescind my motion for this resolution until an indefinite date. No, I don't have to say a date, I just rescind my motion.
Correct. You can rescind it, or you can amend your motion and make it a motion to table until a specific date. It's up to you, Commissioner Roberts.
I'm just going to rescind it for now until we get more information.
I moved to table this matter to a date on or before February 1st of 2021.
Support.
So I have a motion to table resolution R twenty dash one fifty-four from Watson with a second from Commissioner Halt. Is there any public comment? Is there any commissioner comment? Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
The motion to table R twenty-one fifty-four to look at at a later date on or before February 1st, 2021, is approved by unanimous vote.
Mayor Heath, before we move forward, if I can circle you go around. I think that may have missed public.
Either on the resolution for the dog park or for the skate park, one or the other. Could you just reopen public comment for those two items, please?
Okay, I'm pretty sure we did public comment on them, but I will. On both of them, you said?
You could just combine them together, reopen public comment for either the dog park or the skate park.
Okay. So I'm going to reopen public comment for resolution R twenty dash one fifty-two, the resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020-21 budget to properly fund the dog park project. And I'm also going to open public comment for resolution R twenty dash one fifty-three, a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020-21 budget to properly fund repairs to the Adrian skate park. If there's any public comment, do so at this time, please.
Hello, I would like to make a quick comment.
Go ahead.
All right, with the dog park, I understand why people would want one, and I'm not against the idea, I think that's fairly reasonable thing, but we're asking you to put more money towards it in a time where we are about to face an eviction crisis. Not just here in Adrian, but across the country. But some of the additional money could be put towards helping the homeless people. And that includes ways that don't require having a phone. Because in my experience, as being homeless for a while, you don't necessarily have money for a phone. You know, most of the homeless people I encountered did not have phones. But I would say 10K wouldn't solve the problem, but it would be possibly better spent there. There's all this time, I'll have everything stay later, but it's all for now, thank you.
So Attorney Hennigan, do you want us to go back and do commissioner comment and do the vote on that, on the dog park and on the skate park then?
Yes, please.
Public comment?
Just on, I'm sorry, mayor, just on the dog park, because as what the public comment was made on, and being that a public comment may influence the vote of the commission, I would ask that you take a second roll call and commissioner comment on that one.
Okay, so on resolution R twenty dash one fifty-two from Parks and Engineering, a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020-21 budget to properly fund the dog park project. We have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. We've heard public comment, is there any commissioner comment?
Me, I'm going to roll.
Yes.
I just want to remind the public that the dog park was funded through oil trust fund money, and that is a very restricted fund that can only be used for certain things.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer, roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty dash one fifty-five is from transportation. It is a resolution to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a project or authorization from the Michigan Department of Transportation for the Dial-A-Ride program for the purchase of dispatch software through federal and state-funded grants. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support Roberts.
Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts, roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty dash one fifty-seven is from administration. It is a resolution to approve the membership of the City of Adrian in the Kiwanis Trail Regional Authority and the Articles of Incorporation of the KTRA. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move the adopt the resolution, Halt.
Support Gauss.
Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor, I thank Mr. Steele for answering some questions this afternoon and be willing to listen to, so that I completely understand the fee schedule, so thank you.
I'll make some brief comments, like, I'll be quick. Again, I am very happy with this, I think that it's close to the surrounding townships and Kiwanas that were working together, and I think that hasn't happened in a long time. Some partnerships, and again, I think everybody has skin in the game now, and I'm just excited that all hands are on deck and can't wait to see the development of the trail in the future.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer. Mr. Strayer.
Why you statue?
He's frozen.
Back up and then do your roll call.
Yes, I will, I was assuming that.
He just texted me, his computer just died.
Oh. So now what do we do?
He can, he can call in.
He can call in, or he can log in on his phone if he has the Zoom app.
I can't say that that wasn't ironic.
Yeah.
Does even, I mean, he wouldn't know the phone number if his computer died, probably.
I'm going to text it to him right now.
I was going to say, I'm sending it to him right now.
Oh, okay, Michelle can do it. So how's everybody's liberty?
Great, yeah, weather wasn't the best, but, you know.
He's buying breakfast next time for this nonsense.
Yeah, for the whole commission.
Yeah, yeah, one at a time, one at a time.
Oh, hell, let's invite the public.
Everybody on this call, breakfast on land.
That's right.
Mayor Heath, if he doesn't reappear in the next few minutes, you do have quorum, and on that last vote, you do have five yeses, so that would constitute the resolution passing, and you could move forward with the meeting if need be, you have enough commissioners present.
Thank you. Does anybody talk to him, do we think he's close to getting on, or no?
He just wrote me a minute ago, give me a second.
I'm just shaking my head because it could have been me.
Night's not over, Gordon.
I understand, but mine's plugged in. I got it on AC power.
You know, Don gives us credit about the pre-meeting, and then here we go.
I know.
Come on, lad, we need a unanimous vote here.
I know, Drake, I was thinking the same thing, I was, I'm not going to sing though, but I was thinking that.
There he is.
Okay. Commissioner Strayer, we're going to start over with the roll call. On resolution R twenty dash one fifty-seven, we have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Gauss, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty dash one fifty-eight is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to initiate the rezoning of the Marvin Farm to Light Industrial I-1 District and include it in the overlay zone Marijuana Two West. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Gauss.
Support Strayer.
Is there any public comment? Is there any commissioner comment? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Strayer, roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty dash one fifty-nine is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to fill the current City Commission vacancy by appointment. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move the adopt the resolution, Halt.
Support, Watson.
Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Watson, roll call, please.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty dash one sixty is from Community Development. It is a resolution of intent to establish a property-assessed clean energy program and set a public hearing. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adapt the resolution.
Support Gauss.
Sorry, Roberts.
Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss, roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
It is now time for a public comment, just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address.
Hello, Keen Ramos from 422 South Winter here. I have a few concerns I'd like to mention. So first, I'll start with Moses Point One. I have a few concerns I'd like to mention. So first, I'll start with most point one. Like I said, I spent time homeless, so I met numerous homeless people. Like I said, many of them didn't have phones. And many of them didn't feel safe in the shelters because they're so crowded. And that was pre-COVID. Obviously, now with COVID, there's even more concerns. On top of that, that was before the eviction crisis, which has already started across the country. And sure, hasn't quite caught up here, but it's going to. It's all across the country by this point. And then as far as taking care of homeless people, there is evidence of how to deal with them best. That is like people give them a small apartment for months or years, depending, and provide a social worker. During this time, most homeless people get their lives together and be able to progress forward into a state that they're happier in, which generally isn't living in a small apartment that isn't actually theirs. But it keeps them out of the elements, keeps them safer, and has been shown to be the best way to. It's also cheaper than having cops or doing hostile or also known as unpleasant designs such as bumps on stairs or benches. And then as far as the oil money goes, from my understanding, that is meant for improvements for the public good. For, I'm pretty sure building apartment building for homeless people is a public good. You're helping people, and a lot of these can be done by grants. As I saw before, a lot of this can be largely funded. Of course, part of this was pre-COVID, so things are more complicated now, I understand. But it's still something that we could do instead of giving them more obstacles. I would also like to point with the camping ordinance, we're talking sunrise to sunset. Sunset is, of course, early in the winter, of course. But that means that that, people will be getting kicked out of the parks before people have to stop publicly drinking downtown. That seems a little bit odd to me. And then, not quite related, but I think also should be noted, I go to the current agenda on the city website, and it still says August 18th meeting. I'm pretty sure this isn't that meeting, so I question why the current agenda on the site hasn't been fixed. Um, I could ramble a bit more, but I think that's about good. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Heath and Commissioners?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. Don Taylor, 475 Mandarburg Drive. I want to address ordinance 20-008, which was an issue addressed by the Planning Commission very, very thoroughly. And I find that you have a bit of an issue here. We, we approved this zoning change based on all the data we had. And it made a lot of sense to us. But now you are telling us that although you can rezone, you want to rezone property in out on Beecher Street for marijuana, which I totally agree with, but you're not willing to support this effort by someone who's already been approved to have a grow facility, and now wants to have a facility where you can sell marijuana within an approved district. I don't understand why you're not approving this, this split of the property so that, so that it can accommodate what the zoning ordinance is asking us to do. So I find this to be a very difficult vote on your part. And I think it's an improper vote. Unfortunately, we don't have a, I guess, I don't, I'm not sure what the recourse is. But anyway, I'm very disappointed that you made this decision. Let's look at everybody that's trying to have legal marijuana operations and go from there, okay? Thank you.
All right, Will Garcia, William Garcia, 704 Comstock Street, Adrian, Michigan. It is my knowledge that you all received a letter from the National Law Centers for Homelessness and Poverty regarding the proposed camping ban. I wanted to read a little bit of that and also make a few quick comments. The letter partially stated, "Despite the harsh reality that homeless people in Adrian have no choice but to struggle for survival in outdoor public space, the proposed camping ban would make the biological needs to eat and sleep illegal throughout the entire city at all times of day." Now, I'm aware that there have been amendments that have been made to this. "There is no exception in the proposed camping ban for those who lack access to housing or indoor shelter, nor is there any guidance for how to seek permission to camp outside lawfully. As a result, many people living outside in Adrian will be unable to comply with the law and thus unable to avoid punishment for their homeless status. This cruel result is not tolerated by the Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which forbids punishment based on a person's involuntary status and/or inextricably linked with that, or conduct inextricably linked with that status. As explained by the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit, under U.S. Supreme Court precedent on the Eighth Amendment's cruel and unusual punishment clause, a government may not criminalize homeless status nor conduct that is unavoidable, an unavoidable consequence of being homeless, such as sleeping on the streets." That is Martin v. Boise. "The Ninth Circuit is not alone in this interpretation of Eighth Amendment jurisprudence. See Manning v. Caldwell and see also Blake v. City of Grants pass. Given the serious constitutional concerns raised by the proposed camping ban, as applied to homeless people in Adrian, the law center urges the city to vote no on proposed Section 6244. Doing otherwise risks violating, risks violating the constitutional rights of homeless people in Adrian and risks exposing the city to expensive litigation in defense of a misguided camping ban." Now look, the National Law Centers of Homelessness and Poverty, they go to court for these sort of issues with municipalities. If they're telling you that you are risk exposing yourself to expensive litigation, that's like a shark telling you you're exposing yourself to getting eaten. Just being candid, we can talk housing policy. There is so much that we can do in terms of housing first policy. There is so much that we can do to address this issue. But people sleeping, there is nothing in the proposed ordinance that would actually give people the housing that they need. And if that's the direction that we want to move to, I am happy to talk all day on solutions. But this isn't that. This cannot be that. And I'm afraid as a citizen and as someone who was running for state representative, that we are putting the city at this needless risk. I yield.
Janice Merly, 467 Stackford Drive. I've been a longtime volunteer with the homeless programs here in Adrian. I currently volunteer at Share the Warmth. I was, I have continued to be at Share the Warmth through the COVID. Helen Hendricks is here, and she has brought this shelter to our community, and it has elevated our resources in the community. We are viewed upon as being a much more compassionate community because of the shelter. I talked to my sister often, who lives in Chicago, and she is amazed at the services we are providing for these individuals. But they are by and large individual volunteers, and we're by and large people of faith, who are there living out our beliefs. But I'm just really uncomfortable with the fact that you would consider making their lives incredibly difficult in the middle of this COVID crisis. More than any other time, they need our support. They are losing access to services. We are currently only have about 22 people. We've only take up to 40. We at one point had 60. So those are basic numbers that need to be looked at, and we need to work together as a community, looking for different resources, pulling housing help, pulling Helen Hendricks' knowledge, Steve Palmer, community mental health, all those resources, and come up with a solution. We can't dismiss this situation with language saying we have these rules on the books. These are far different times. We haven't had a situation like this for at least 100 years. So we need to be flexible in how we address this problem and not just come up with a quick, simple solution. Thank you.
Andy Wilcox, 564 South Winter Street. I'd like to read a part of the National Law of Homelessness Centers letter as well. "In addition to being ineffective and costly, the proposed camping ban also threatens public health by reducing homelessness people's options for socially isolated shelter during the COVID-19 pandemic. Access to private shelter, even if the form of shelter is not optimal, is important to curbing the spread of the deadly coronavirus. In recognition of this fact, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has advised cities not to displace people experiencing homelessness from their private shelters and outdoor communities during the COVID-19 pandemic. Specifically, the CDC states, "If individual housing options are not available, allow people who are living unsheltered in encampments to remain where they are. Clearing encampments can cause people to disperse throughout the community and break connections with service providers. This increases the potential for infectious disease spread." Also, earlier, it was talked about how people want to leave their house and go walk through the park. And I understand that everyone's cooped up and they want to get out. These people have nowhere to go. And I want to know which family has been assaulted inside our park by a homeless person? Like, which homeless person has assaulted an entire family that was going for a walk through the park? I feel like we're romanticizing this idea that the homelessness are out to get our children, and that's being used against our homeless community. And really, these people just want to eat in peace and sleep in peace. And if that bothers you so much and you're uncomfortable about it, do something and make a difference and try and change that. Don't just say, "I don't want to see it, so let's give them a ticket. Maybe they'll move out of our community." So I'm a little bit upset at this, and I'm upset that you aren't upset, and that's all I have to say.
Helen Hendricks, 1787 Williamsburg Drive. And I appreciated the clarification that attorney Henigan gave at the beginning of this meeting. But I hope that the commission can look at the implications of closing off any opportunity that people have to stay places when there are not places for them to stay in sheltered places. As Jan pointed out, we have a capacity of 60. However, with COVID, our capacity is greatly reduced. We have 20 at this time, and we will only be going up to 40. The weather is getting colder, and there are people who are unsheltered out there, and what options do they have? And I think that it could end up into their criminalization. I think it could end up with their being in the downtown area and/or going on private property. And I would hope, as a member, I'm a member of the continuum of care, and that we could work in partnership to try to find a resolution to this that that addresses both concerns. I know that you have two concerns to look at, the citizenry and the homeless population, but both deserve to have a place to live. And, and I'm hoping that we can work in partnership with that. Thank you.
I'm going to allow just a few more seconds here, minutes, just to make sure that everybody that wanted to have public comment has time. They might be having trouble on you, so I'm just making sure. Hearing no more public comment, I'm going to move on to commissioner comments. Are there any commissioner comments?
Well, I do.
Go ahead, Commissioner Watson.
You know, this is, this is homelessness, camping, parks, it's really tough. We've gotten a lot of information thrown at us. I, I can speak for myself, but knowing the rest of my commissioners and the mayor, it's not an easy decision or discussion for any of us. I appreciate all the efforts that are put in, in our community to address this need, to address the demand that's out there for services. And we're gonna navigate through this. And, and the decision that's made might not be liked by, it won't be liked by all. But, but I ask the community, just for a little bit of faith and trust that we are taking into consideration all sides, because this is a very sensitive matter. There's passion on both sides. And we have, we are charged to make a decision someplace in the middle. And we're gonna do our best, and, and the city staff will do their best. They have been helpful, providing insight. I spent time with the chief of police, visiting with, with, with homeless populations around the city. We've received pictures from, from our staff of what's actually going on in the parks. There's, there's a lot happening in this. And hopefully, we come out with a resolution that's someplace in the middle that, that takes into, or shows how much work we've put into this, fully understanding that everybody's not gonna be happy with the outcome. I don't know what it's gonna be, but, boy, we're working hard on this.
I have a few things I'd like to say. First of all, if, if you're not aware of the fact that several years ago, I worked for more than a year reporting about homelessness. In fact, if you look at the back, the wall behind me, you'll see a picture of a guy named Steve North, who lived in the woods for 10 years. I spent days, months, weeks with Steve. I walked the streets, canning with Steve. I was at his camp with he and others drinking beer, okay? I mean, I, I helped co-author a book that can still be purchased on Amazon about homelessness. I understand the issue. And I want to say that I and the rest of the commissioners, and they're not ogres, going after these people. This issue would have never happened had people who were at the parks and on the Kiwanis Trail hadn't made a total mess of things. When I used to hang out with the homeless, there were just as many homeless back then as there are now. But everybody had their camp. Nobody made a mess of things. Nobody was on the Kiwanis Trail. We had the Kiwanis Trail back then. Nobody was camping on it and trashing things. Nobody was trashing camps in the park. It just didn't happen. Everybody was discreet. They knew they had to be discreet. In fact, they were so discreet that when we first started reporting, there were people that called me a liar, and said that we didn't have homeless people in Adrian because they were discreet. What's happening now is this is really in your face, and it's made a lot of people uncomfortable. I can't tell you how many texts, phone calls, and emails that I've had from people saying, "I'm not walking on the Kiwanis Trail anymore," or "My wife's uncomfortable on the Kiwanis Trail." And they're uncomfortable because, first of all, they, they travel the trail and they see people hanging around on the trail drinking alcohol. They see spots where people spent the night and they left all their garbage. They left bottles. They trashed the place. The trail and the parks are for everybody. And I'm sorry, but a lot of times, it's a situation where a few bad apples ruin it for everybody. Now, don't come back at me and saying that I'm causing, I'm calling the homeless bad apples. I'm saying that I understand homelessness. I'm saying that within that group, there are some bad apples, and they have ruined it for everybody. And that's why we had to make some changes with this ordinance. So we're not ogres going after the homeless. And in fact, there's nothing about homeless mentioned in that, in that ordinance. It's about camping. It's about trashing the parks. It's about trashing the Kiwanis Trail. So like Commissioner Watson said, everybody's not gonna be happy, but you have to realize that we're looking out for all the citizens. And again, if there are, if, if you are compassionate about the homeless and you know the homeless, go talk to them. Set them straight. If somebody had have done that already, if people had gone to the park and seen what they've done, if they had have gone to the trail and seen what they have done and set them straight, we wouldn't be here today. So I'll leave it at that.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Strayer and I were sitting on the commission when we had a very contentious meeting, and this meeting was, the chambers was full. I think they almost put it the chambers was full. I think they almost put it at capacity. It was the rezoning, the original rezoning of Share the Warmth. Okay? That was unanimous vote in support of the rezoning. With that being said, we had neighbors from around the neighborhood that were very, very aggressive, contentious, yelling at us. I had a gentleman that lives adjacent to Share the Warmth in public. I was with my family, my kids, and, and he was angry with me. And, and, and I have never been homeless, but anybody that knows me knows my story. I grew up poor, right? So I have compassion. This, this issue beyond the other side of it for consideration only brings out, um, it's tough. And you're not gonna make everybody happy, but I guarantee the six of us, I know all individually personally, I'm gonna put a lot of time in it. I know I've spoke to many people. I've met with people to try to educate myself on this issue, and, and this is not an assault on the homeless. This is, how do we make our parks safe for everyone? But to say that we don't have compassion is not fair. I think that, I think that, you know, especially, you know, all six of us, Commissioner Strayer and I, made a decision that was not very popular with, you know, with, with taxpayers, with neighbors, but could be felt was the right thing to do. So again, we're going back to the drawing board to, to, to think this, to talk to more people, but this is one of those issues, I've been on the commission long enough to know that you're not gonna make everybody happy. And, and, and this is why we're likely to do, likely to make decisions, and, and I'm comfortable in that role, but just know that, that each and every one of us are gonna take the time and effort to find out what's the best solution, you know, you know, you know, for this issue, so.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to address.
Go ahead.
So one of the things that keeps being brought up is that there isn't affordable housing, which I, I agree with. I, and, oh, just since the not-quite-two-years I've been on, we have tried for grants with the Gump Project and Mitchner Project to have private companies get some grants to put in some affordable housing, and they haven't been approved. So it's not as if we aren't trying. We, the city cannot build apartments. We, we don't have the funds. We don't have the funds to buy the new ambulance that is needed. So we certainly don't have the funds to build the new, another homeless shelter or provide other opportunities for people to live. And it's, would we like to? Of course, I'd love for all homeless not to be homeless, but that's just not realistic. So I want you to keep in mind that we have tried to provide some affordable housing, and we will continue to try to provide affordable housing, but it has to be a joint partnership, a company who is willing to do so, and then with the federal and state who can provide some of the assistant grants to make it profitable for the company.
Hearing no more commissioner comments, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Or?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.